Child care center study for business plans. That's fifteen thousand five hundred, that money will come out of the Hillker trust fund.
Thank you.
The ARPA funds down payment for the digital records preservation at twenty seven thousand three hundred nineteen thousand. Uh yearly maintenance agreements for I T which was twenty nine thousand twenty nine dollars, that was a bill from June that uh. We had to put into this year, so we're just catching up. On that one. Between June and July of last year um. Lost bones for childcare analysis for new daycare eight thousand, um give the. To the H C C E for countywide volunteer projects, which is lost funds at four thousand. And lost funds capital projects of H back payoff for sixty five thousand fifty dollars. Uh the last one on the H back, we originally were gonna use the ARPA funds for, we found out we could not because it was past debt, so. We're using the lost funds to pay that. Any public hearing, public comments?
The ending balance. Didn't like get changed drastically from the initial.
Which ending balance, Dave?
Uh without having it in front of me, apologize, but. Last time I was here. Made perfect sense that you need to carry half of your budget needs to be carried over because you only receive the tax money twice a minute.
Right.
In order to make payroll, but it looked like what was published in the paper, that. Carryover balance was gonna be a lot less than half.
So what we like is. This is my personal opinion in talking to former supervisor Jim Johnson, somewhere between like eighteen and twenty five is a good safe number. So that's kind of the doctrine that I followed um and talking to Michelle. Uh tax payments came in at a good rate, so um I believe that eighteen to twenty five is is a good number, Dave.
Okay.
I personally prefer like closer to the twenty five, cuz that's you have almost a quarter of the year gone before you collect. Rock me guys.
So I'll get a clarify these two, these two hearings, that that was a hearing on the new budget.
Right.
This is a budget amendment for this current year.
Oh, for the current year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, alright.
Not going ahead, yeah.
No, you're you're fine, I just.
They do correlate though, Dave, I mean.
Well, right, 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 sorry.
So, and that's where I said that three hundred and thirteen thousand, it's actually in next year's budget, we're just pulling it today.
Okay.
So it'll actually come out of carryover, but we won't need it for next year.
Okay.
Um is there any other public comments? Has there been any written?
No.
Any oral?
I have received.
Okay, it has been published.
I do have, I I would like to make a comment, one of the things that is concerning in this amendment in. Uh this is no fault of ours, but the technology companies have us. You know, up against the wall on some of these things, these uh subscription fees and and maintenance things that. There's nothing really tangible you put in your hands, um they can dictate whatever dollar amount. You know, they want to renew to keep your uh. Hardware hardware up to date, so uh.
And they go up drastically.
Yeah, uh because they know you. You're held hostage by them, so I just wanna make sure that it's not a matter of anything new, but just to maintain. Uh look at your license for uh Microsoft Office or an Apple product, they go up dramatically, so. I just wanted to point that out that this isn't a Matt Jones thing or Michael Pierce, but it's just an industry wide thing. That was my only comment, Lance.
Comment on that for my, from experience, don't fall behind.
No.
Catching up hard.
Well, they can lock you out.
Well. Yeah, don't think I'll pass this one and we'll catch up later, don't do that.
Yeah.
Even though it's painful, don't do it. Cuz it'll be a lot more painful.
Yep.
Any other comments? No comments, I can entertain motion to close hearing.
Somewhere.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Okay, I, you did.
I.
Kai, motion carries. Now is consideration approved the resolution twenty twenty five sixteen appropriation resolution amendment.
Lance, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty five dash sixteen.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
You did?
I.
I.
Kai. Motion carries, now is consideration to approve the resolution twenty twenty five seventeen allocating E M A funding.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty twenty five dash seventeen um allocating the E M A funding. Um. An amount to. I think we. Budgeted three hundred thousand. Um.
Get to it. This is for the E M A funding, I I thought we did two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget, that's why I said hang on. Did you, did you start a motion?
No, I, well, I did. I thought it was three hundred.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, okay.
Wait, why don't I just let this motion fail for a second?
Okay.
For lack of second, okay, now. On on this uh resolution for allocating the E M A funding, do we wanna do one hundred percent upfront, do you wanna? Find that percentage of it, do you wanna do it monthly, do you wanna do it quarterly, do you wanna do it?
I don't think monthly would be.
This'll. Um.
So she, with what the resolution is just stating, what percent do we wanna give?
Lance, what do you want, what are you thinking with the carryover and?
I'm I'm thinking twenty five percent and we can look at it again in three months if we had to, they have a huge carryover already, I mean. Their carrier over, I gave to get them all way till December anyway.
And what are you thinking?
I guess I don't, I mean, in Thomas's gear today, but um. I don't know where they are with like purchase of radios or their equipment, that type of thing. Um I, I guess we can always come back. In a couple of weeks if we need to.
Right.
So. If you wanna start with twenty five.
I'm willing, I'm 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 willing to. You know, medium metal, do you, I mean.
I'd prefer at least fifty.
Okay. I'll um, I'd say fifty then in motion, I can support that with me.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen allocating E M A funding at fifty percent. Of the funds budgeted for the E M A.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
But it's the end of that resolution. The day month.
Uh and.
Oh, yes.
The last paragraph should read uh. Twenty twenty five. Or actually, it should be today's day.
Yes.
Today's day.
Today's day. Correct.
Which is, give me the date.
June eleventh twenty twenty five.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hey, I, PJ.
I.
Kai, motion carries. Next is consider resolution. Twenty twenty five eighteen resolution to publish notice setting hearings of proposed resolution declaring emergency medical services, the E M S. The essential service in Hardin County.
So Lance, I'm gonna go ahead and um with your permission. Give a little explanation if that works.
Uh yes.
For motion, just because I have to set dates into the motion.
Right, and I just wanna point out if there's public comments that wanna come in, let's hold those to the end.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think that's amicable. Um so. My my opening comments, I appreciate everybody being here to discuss EMS's and a lot of people here for EMS's essential service. Um as a former provider. I. Understand the importance. Uh the process is not easy, and I've talked to a handful of you here in the room about the process. And so the initial part of the process after confering with uh attorney Meyer. Is the first part that I hope will pass today is. To set three pub. Excuse me, three public hearing dates for meetings. Just to get the ball rolling. Now, within the section of Iowa code, we have to give a sixty day notice. So to add some, a little bit of cushion for. And and attorney Meyer to get everything to uh the newspapers. We're we're gonna push that out about sixty five days. To make sure that we get our publications correct because we don't wanna start this process. And then have somebody say you didn't start it right, so we wanna make sure our ducks are in a row. So my intention today is you have three dates, two in August uh during daytime hours. And then third date, a Monday night at seven P M. Um. My only challenge, I think that the evening uh the last one. Uh, we may need a larger space, so um I'm not sure if. The motion has to name the exact venue because if there's great public interest. I don't wanna confine it to people that can fit in this room on a Monday night. So.
As we have. We have to. Publish notice in the meeting and then we can put there then where it's held, we will maybe try and do that a little ahead of time.
Right.
Do you want it up in the courtroom?
That might be the best for the third meeting.
If if it's a night meeting, it should be open.
Yeah.
I I'd say the E M A building, but I don't know if it's open or not.
Right, okay, so um Lance, I do wanna.
You think of a September date on Monday night, what date are you thinking?
Uh because the first is a holiday. So the eighth. Of September.
Okay. Is. Potentially a jury trial on on a Tuesday, but not.
Okay, alright, thank you. Lance, I do, I would like to stray from. After thinking here, I would like some public comment about just this process, if there's questions about. The process at this point and what's gonna happen, is that okay?
Yep.
So are there any questions about what we're going to initiate today, I've got some of our first responder community and. And other elected officials here, so Kerry, I'll start with you.
At one point, we had discussed that your initial process would be to establish an advisory committee that had representation from each community in a county. Is that still the direction you'd like?
Yeah, that has to be the direction, but. Due to the counsel of attorney Meyer, today is just to get those dates set, so um my idea is to, I. Carrie, you and I have talked uh spoken about this a few times. My, I'm nervous about putting a lot of cooks in the kitchen. But everybody deserves to have that representation. Including some of our bigger contributors in the county uh in our township trustees. So my my recommendation uh down the road will be to have uh one. Township trustee from each township, so that's fifteen trustees. And then one representative from each community that will be appointed by the mayor, it could be um. Somebody in EMS community, but as an example, Owassa doesn't have EMS, but they have a mayor, so Mayor Naring could appoint. Uh himself or somebody else from the area to represent the city of them. Because of their taxing interest and their valuation interest, so uh I believe that. The person. That will facilitate that will help facilitate, much like a mayor council structure, they're there to facilitate the meeting and keep things on track. But then um my. My theory would be to have uh each township be representative, represented and each town. So that way, I mean, you're looking at twenty six people in the kitchen, but I I've looked at other counties and it. They have a lot as well. But at this point, I believe that the representation from each community has to be there. So um.
Thank you for that, yeah, I know that was one of the questions that brought some people to the room.
Yeah. Dave.
It is, it's probably not here, hopefully a time to move a bit ahead here, but. There's some other counties that have successfully.
Yeah.
Done this. And as part of this committee. Would be homeless to reach out to those and find the pitfalls, the. Where they walk off the ledge where they wish they wouldn't have type situations, what helped pass it?
Yep. No, and and I appreciate you reaching out to me. Several times and even last night to, and I know that you had some interaction with someone up in the Spencer area.
Yeah.
And we wanna pull the best practices and lessons learned into this process, so um yeah, and hopefully uh we can. Facilitate a means of getting that constructive criticism and those. Subject matter experts. Into our, uh at least into our fold as advisory roles.
And I think. This first part looks like, you know, we're just organized. But. A stumble in this area could take a long time to overcome if it's not presented properly.
Yeah.
To the public. So I'm cautious to be very careful about how we go about that and what's the reason for it. I mean, that hasn't actually been stated yet, I don't believe. So I'm just gonna tell you, and this comes from the president of Spencer Hospital.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments quickly, um. Shoot, this side here. That I thought were pertinent to this. Um. They went down this path and they're not there yet. And by their own admission, they doubt if it'll pass this year because of all the flood damage they still have to. Address within Clay County, so they're in a little bit different situation, but. They said the company, they they hired a consulting company. To evaluate the entire county, and I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying that's a. A possibility, but the challenges based in Clay County were a drop in volunteerism, escalation of costs to provide the services, lack of increased funding. Increased call volume, workforce shortages, and staff and volunteer burnout, and I think every single one of those resonates with us.
Yes.
In many different places here, so I. There's a lot of similarities. Um through that, and I can obviously, I can gather more information from them as they go through this, but I think gathering that from. A trusted source.
Yeah.
It's gonna be critical, but we don't, we're gonna make sure this doesn't come out. In a wrong way and get a negative connotation to start with.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was wondering how you would select uh twenty six individuals with them. Be from the supervisors or can we recommend names or?
Though we won't, so uh ideally. The the trust township trustees. There's three of those in each township, they would have to choose amongst themselves which one would represent the township. So that would take care of the township trustee aspect, then the community representatives would uh ideally. Be appointed by the mayor or the council. And that would be ratified in a public meeting and bring meeting minutes. Showing who the representative is for the community back, so if you wanted to lobby to be that person in your community, then you would lobby. Your mayor or council to be that person. So it it's not, we're not going to pick a team.
It'd be each governing body.
Each governing body, yep. Does that answer your?
Yes.
Question, thank you. Okay, Jerry.
No question.
No, okay. Bud?
Just listening.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, so I, my only concern with that, so my name's John Schmitz, I kind of chose to put myself into this. Because of. I'm 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 a veteran here in town, I'm retired. Because of my time in the golf service. I'm a little concerned about the statement I'm making, one individual. Whether it's in Eldora with population of less than twenty seven hundred, Iowa Falls, five thousand something change, I understand. Every community that's part of this should have a say. But I would be, I would struggle with the idea of having one individual from the two larger communities only have one representation, I think that would be an unbalanced approach. Just my opinion, um I want, as everybody does, want essential services to happen, I understand, B J, so we've talked a little bit. I came across pretty harshly initially cuz I didn't understand, I'll admit it, I don't know what I don't know, and I'm here to learn, okay, so. That's my only, that's all, when I hear you phrase it, I get it about everybody wanting to be. From each community, but I think it's gonna be off balance if you only have one person from Eldora and one person from Iowa Falls. In my opinion, as an unbalanced state, that's that would be unbalanced, cuz it's it's the two biggest people. With sixteen thousand people in Hardin County. Are two biggest, cut, sorry, it's two biggest. Cities, let's make it like that.
So. I'm gonna defer to Lance in a second here, but I can tell you, so the advisory committee that the state code requires us to have. Isn't going to decide whether this passes or fails. Uh there, what we're wanting the advisory committee to do is look at system standards, uh the the level of service. And so we've. Seen in previous uh county committees and stuff where a weighted vote. Is really tough, one example is Emergency Management Commission, uh Renee represents sixty six percent of the population of Hardin County.
New dollar.
Or sixty six cents of each dollar in Hardin County, tax dollar, but she has one vote. And in comparison. Lance, I like Owassa pays how much per dollar?
They can't even make a sound.
And they have the same vote as. Uh Renee. So I'm not picking on Renee or the city of Owassa, but it, that equity there, I I definitely see it. But what we're asking the advisory committee to come in do is get those service standards and what the dollars and cents look like, then. Everybody in Hardin County that's a registered legally registered voter will have their. Uh data, vote yes or no on the propose.
So one follow up, so so people are listening in and understand or watch this later. Once that you folks have the information from the advisory committee, you take that amongst yourself. Kind of break it down to decide what works best.
No.
You do not?
No.
Okay, so how does?
So personally. When we get some type of ballot language back that it's gonna cost eight cents or whatever. That will go to the county attorney and the auditor to make sure that the ballot language is appropriate. And we facilitate putting it on the ballot. If it comes out to the max, our only job here is to facilitate the resolution. And facilitate a vote of the public, so if it comes in at. Ten cents uh per thousand evaluation. Um. Our job is to make sure the ballot language is correct, the elections are held fairly, and that we then facilitate a fair election.
Right. When you're talking the dollars here, you're talking the recommended mileage rate.
Yep.
But that's limited by the state.
It is, yep.
That's seventy five cents.
It's right, right, so. I'm not going to get in the way, if this committee of. Experts and stakeholders come together and say it's gonna, it needs to be fifteen cents or fifty five cents, I personally am not going to stand in the way. Of that going on on the ballot.
So to that point, I think, John, one of the things that is important is that the advisory committee will need public support to pass. Whatever their recommendation is, so even though communities might not be. Equally represented on the advisory committee, there will be. Other uh ways that the public can help support or refine the bill.
The the way.
They might even do some sort of focus group testing where they bring in. Individuals from a community and say, hey, we're considering this, let's get some feedback on that before that valid language is proposed.
Uh huh.
So I would just encourage anybody who's on that advisory committee to keep in mind your comments and. Recognize that the general public has a great interest in this and that they should be considered as assets to help push it forward or refine.
Right, thank you, and I, this gentleman already explained, he spoke to person in Spencer, I had already decided, I'm just because. I've got time, I'm not in the working world anymore, I was going to reach out and get the verbiage from the other fourteen counties, is that correct, the fourteen counties in the state?
I believe so.
I'm not, probably not gonna talk to each one of them.
Right.
But I am, like this gentleman explained. Talk to them, get some insight, so we don't get blindsided or miss something, it's all about understanding how the whole process works. And so when, at the end of the, at the end of the day, when it comes to be, so the sixteen thousand or the voting population has complete understanding. Of what's going on and how important this is to the community. And you gotta ask questions, if you don't ask questions, you don't learn.
Correct.
And you gotta learn by our mistakes or others' mistakes and move forward from that, so.
Yep, no, and and I appreciate your dialogue, I appreciate you offering me grace and and no hard feelings.
No.
You're passionate a person and I appreciate that, but you're respectful in the same right, thank you.
Thank you, cuz the state association of counties. Gather that information for you, and that one should not be one of the services they provide, yeah.
We have resources that we get them, yeah.
Yeah.
The EMS commission can help us with that and all of it, so.
Sir, in the uniform, I don't know you, I apologize.
Josh.
Josh.
Door EMS.
Okay, do you have any comments, questions, concerns?
Just here to learn.
Okay. Anything else on EMS, ma'am?
Yeah. I'm from the bank, I'm for the next one.
Okay. Thank you, thank, thank you. Okay. Anything else before I make a formal motion, I would just wanna be respectful and make sure that. We had for for a lot dialogue this morning. If not, I'd make a motion uh to approve resolution twenty twenty five eighteen and. Have the three hearings published for August twentieth at nine oh one A M. In the large conference room of the Hardin County courthouse. August twenty seventh, nine oh one A M in the large conference room of the Hardin County courthouse. And September eighth. Seven P M in the courtroom of the Hardin County courthouse.
I will second it.
It, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Jolene. Um. With uh any of the logistics, does that? Look good to you, sound good to you?
With that calendar, I get them.
Okay. And then. Okay, and then I will um go to the clerk of courts and work with them on securing the uh space. For the evening of September eighth.
Good, amazing, given those dates, what was? Is it be the date of the key?
So I'm gonna let Ann. Get it published as soon as possible. To allow for plenty of leeway, so Ann, would you work on publishing? This notification, um. Elaine, what's your cutoff date for Saturday?
Um, I think Thursday noon.
Okay, and then Bree.
Friday.
Friday noon, Ann, can you work on getting those published? Please.
Thursday. For Saturday. Um. One question on that, do you want them like the days published together?
Yep.
Who's? Reaching out to all the townships of?
Well, that will be.
Later.
Down the road, we've gotta get through this public hearing process. First, we'll, we'll.
It'll have to be another action item.
Right, but I will have the board secretary give notice that this is on the horizon. And to start thinking about it.
So who's gathering the information to present at the public meetings?
The, the public hearings are really in, there's no data at this point, so the first three are just to affirm that the public wants this.
Wants to declare EMS. As an essential service. That step one.
Understood. But how you present that and the information that's dispersed. Is gonna be critical for. Pass, I.
Well, but but we're not going to have the advisory people won't meet until after those three meetings, they can't like go. All this is to is to affirm the the decision that will be made here in the next few minutes.
But to try and make. The best use of those public hearings, gotta present them with something.
And I could reach out to the elected officials and say, hey, if you wanna come in and.
Go ahead, you don't wanna just walk them in and say, we wanna make it an essential service and we're gonna tax you three quarters of a mileage point.
I can guarantee you that there will be somebody at these public hearings that will come in with facts such as fourteen counties have already passed this. Our, our call rates are, you know, like basically just hit some highlights. The thing that they can't talk about yet, we can talk about the current situation that helps set the date for.
Talking about the need.
About the need.
Yeah.
Determining need.
Not the solution, okay, then who's doing that? Who thinks there's a need, they should probably be present. What what will be the platforms now, BJ, I know you already. Share so our people can hear, where are the platforms that the information these days gonna be on so people will know?
So they'll be noticed just like our regular supervisor statements.
We're sure.
In the paper.
Uh, online paper and then posting in the official spot upstairs.
Okay, so that's that's really limited, okay, so I appreciate, that's why I ask, cause you don't know, but you don't know where to look. Cause if you don't know where to look, even though you're interested, I gotta ask a question.
Yep, no, that's a fair question, so yeah, this is just the notice, noticing the public. That we are going to establish this committee. And they will bring back at some point a recommendation. Or not. At some point.
I would, I would put a lot of it back on to the the entities that would need to come in. To the public hearing, that's what you're doing, you're coming in and to notify this is why we wanna do this. These are the meetings, you wanna know, are we gonna reach out to those people to bring them in as part of the platform? That.
That was one of my questions, but.
So the the platform would be a person like you just came in that gave us the platform of why we need this. I mean. You you presented everything. We're just, we're just here to do the public hearings to move forward and then then the committee will be set. And then they will then target. Everything, but. Hon honestly, um three public hearings are gonna get published once, that's it, correct?
Right.
We're only publishing this once, so now it's gotta be word of mouth by your city councils and townships and everybody to get on board with this.
But because it's an official meeting of us, it'll be published like today's meeting was and next week's meeting.
It'll be on the agenda.
Right, it'll be in the legal notices.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm hoping that uh as an example, I hope Aaron Budwig comes in that day and says. Uh, public supervisors, I wanna let you know that I would appreciate you moving forward with this resolution and process because. When the Eldora ambulance goes to Union, when their ambulance is out of service or out of town or understaffed. We aren't collecting any tax dollars from the people in the city of Union or that geographic area, so.
I agree with that.
Those, that's what.
Totally, but that's what your hope shows up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I I've been addressed by multiple people out in the public, why haven't we done this? And these are some EMS people, why why haven't we done this? So if we move forward here, now services possibly come to the meeting. And I can tell them we're doing this, that's not a big issue, actually I have.
And trust me, I mean. John, I know that uh you will spread the word, Terry will spread the word, um we'll notice. All the cities and townships that this is, this process has started and encourage them to. You know, get people to the public hearing.
Well, I'll be too presumptuous, I would say that the majority of the people in this room are in favor of it, okay? You need to plan for the guy that's coming in that's gonna have a boatload of material that's on the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any?
Yes, there is plans to address some of that.
Okay, so so the men and women who don't understand. What essential services is, what is that, what does that terminology mean? Can you say it so they know in your mind, what is that very terminology mean?
Yeah, right now?
Well.
I I can tell you what it.
If it was made to be legal, let's say legal and not legal, today it's not legal, meaning that terminology in this county.
Yep. So if, so um. On September eighth, at that meeting, we could have an action item to move this ahead. At that point, I would tell the public. If the people of Harden County vote for the the referendum. Not just making EMS as an essential service, but if they vote, they will be taxed. For EMS service. In some areas, that may be a paramedic level service, in other areas, that may be a first responder service. But the taxation will support EMS directly. It won't have to come out of the city street funds, they won't have to come out of um a franchise fee, a utility franchise fee. And what the service standards look like is up to that advisory council, John. That that's, that's as simple as I can put it at this point.
We're we're neutral, we're just here to facilitate.
And I get that, I I appreciate that.
Yep, so yeah, it will be.
Calling something essential, that's your your term, it's it's equivalent of a key, because it allows then access to a referendum to tax. If you don't call it essential, they said call it something, so they called it essential, it's just a term that gives the. The county a key to put something on a ballot for the citizens to vote up or down on a tax. Without it, you you won't be taxed, with it, you could be taxed. And the advisory committee determines what that ought to be and how it's gonna be allocated and all those. Details.
I appreciate that, you know, very much, your explanation, but for any newspaper people that are listening that may publish the results of this meeting. And this is not derogatory to even to use the word tax. Several times, which is true. But I think it's essential that people understand that that tax would be throughout the county. And may not, may not, may or may not. Add to what you're already paying. As a wild example, if that funding was at such a level. You could actually see the taxes in a particular city. And use Eldora if you want to, for example, go down. Because of the countywide support that would be coming in through this fund.
Yeah, possibly.
So I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that tax, tax, tax means. Not, cause that's not necessarily true, it will be in some areas. In the rural areas that are contributing nothing to EMS services today. Will be asked to contribute, is the way I would frame them. Minimal. Not, there are some townships that can hear.
There are some.
This is Georgia.
Yeah, I didn't wanna use.
But nothing across the board.
Right, it's not across the board.
Yeah.
So I. That's the point, I just don't want anybody to walk away thinking it's it's another tax, we're gonna add another tax.
Yeah.
Technically is true, but it may replace the number that are already there.
Right, yes. Lance, I'd go ahead and call for the vote.
Roll call.
BJ?
Hi.
Renee?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries, and thank you for that, bud.
Yeah, thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Next I have is consideration to approve the final CD bid for Hearn County Employee Public Health Plan Trust Funds. And I think I slid them over to you, the results. We got Shandra down here?
Yep.
All right, Shandra.
Thank you, bud.
Yeah. Oh, I guess I had that for not with me.
You want a copy of ours?
No, I know there was two that were tied for the high, highest one for the one year one.
Yeah, that was falls in Wellsburg.
Yeah.
That's six months, yeah. Well, both.
And I gave you the history of who you used before in the past down below.
Yep.
Yep. Cause usually you do a year at a time. Now, I would always give you the option, but like maybe some at a year. Some at a year and a half, some at two years. You think they're, they're gonna go up and down, but I wouldn't know if they're gonna do this now.
I wanna make sure we're working within the investment policy, so. Is there any reason? To break things down, or are we okay with just a twelve month, what what's your suggestion?
I haven't seen anything, so it's hard for me to.
So.
Please, John, something that I don't have.
Okay.
Um, but.
I would prefer to keep them as one, not split them by rate over time.
Okay.
And just so, I know it's in the packet and everything, but twelve months. Uh, GMB Ackley was four percent, Harden County Savings Bank was four point one five. Iowa Falls State Bank, four point two five, People Savings Bank of Wellsburg, four point two. And.
That was for twelve months?
Twelve months.
And that was the four point?
Two five was the high from Iowa Falls State Bank.
That was twelve months, right?
Yep.
Okay, what was the next option?
Well, four point two five.
In turn, in term or rate?
Uh, I wanna know the rates per term, so really all I need is a high.
Yeah, four point two five is the best from Iowa Falls State Bank um. At twelve months or six months.
So they got both six months, they got the high on both?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, at six months, they're tied with Peoples in Wellsburg. But I'm, I would like to do a twelve month, would be my preference, thanks.
Okay, and then there was an eighteen option.
Eighteen goes from four. At Harden County Savings Bank to four point one at Iowa Falls State Bank and three point nine five. At Peoples.
So Iowa Falls State Bank got higher.
Yeah, if you're, I I mean, I don't know what the. Federal Reserve will do, um another option would be. Twenty four months at four point one, that's quite the safety net.
Yeah.
But I like to have the. Access at twelve months.
Right.
So that I would lean towards um.
And we kinda almost have to.
Right, cause we don't know what those renewals.
Like, just like earlier, we's. Earlier now, we're spending a little bit of money. Well, later, we're spending a little bit of money, got that money set aside, how much money did we set aside without we aren't investing?
There'll be eighty left in the account.
Eighty thousand, so. We will sub eighty thousand play with, but if we have a huge spike in insurance rates. We could use this twenty to offset it so our budget's not nailed there as hard.
Yeah.
And that's why I kinda like to say within that twelve month.
Yeah, I I I agree, though. Lance, I'll make a motion uh to approve Iowa Falls State Bank, the twelve month. Uh, investment at four point two five percent.
I will second it.
They moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, roll call.
BJ?
Hi.
Renee? Hi.
I, motion carries, and I do thank everybody for giving their bids.
Thanks for coming down today.
Next I have is consideration approved the transfer of funds to IGCHV accounts.
Make a motion to approve the transfers fund of funds within IGHCP accounts.
I will second that.
And move and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Carries, next is consideration approved the application for vision care benefits.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve uh the application for vision care benefits for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six with a visas.
I have a second one.
Then move and seconded, any discussion? All right, none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is consideration approved release of mortgage. We had a little bit of conversation on this, this is something that was drawn up by Region Six here quite a few years ago. And they had an error in the forgiven part of one twentieth, it should have been twenty percent per year. They they have met the five year commitment and. This house. If I recall, the owner is deceased and they wanna sell the property.
Right, and the title needs to be cleared.
And the title needs to be clear, so we just need to review, so.
I go ahead and make a motion to approve the release of the mortgage. Um, I'm gonna read the document ID here. Uh, two thousand seven twenty eight forty five type zero four zero zero one.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Carries, next is consideration approved fireworks permit for J and M Displays in Summit Agricultural.
Make a motion to approve the fireworks permit for J and M Displays Inc. The with the Summit Agricultural Group, and that is for. Okay, July twenty sixth at twenty, two two zero five one, two hundred thirtieth street, Hubbard, Iowa.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Carries, next is consideration approved special class C retail alcohol license for Timbers Edge Wedding and Events Center.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the special class C alcohol license for Timbers Edge. Wedding and Event Center, and that is a a twelve month effective June twentieth.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Bush carries. Uh, next is consideration approved community betterment match grant application for perennial. Not printing.
Yeah.
Perennial pages, bookshop.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the community betterment match grant application for perennial pages bookshop in Ackley.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Have any?
Um, and new business have an Ackley. Again, for signage and owners Lori Halliday.
Yeah.
Can't touch it. Invite you to attend, and we are winding down the the year, so if there is any businesses that anyone knows of that. Needs assistance with signage, our applications are open, so contact me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we've done the reports, we've done changes status, we are in other businesses. Michelle?
Um, current, current year taxes are gonna be up for sale here on June sixteenth, so if you don't want your taxes to go to tax sale. Please get them paid by before the sixteenth of June.
Okay. Any other business? Very none, public comment?
No.
You can ask for a turn?
Motion to return.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all bear say aye.
I had one discussion item, I just wanna thank everybody for coming in and having. Good dialogue today, I appreciate that, so.
All bear?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.